We don't have any members remotely today, so we all. We don't have to do everything by roll call, et cetera.
They all look older than he is.
You ready?
I guess.
Just let me know when you're ready.
My name's Derek Beckwith. I'm vice chair of the Beverly Planning Board. Our esteemed chairperson, Ellen Hutchinson, is in a meeting. She'll be joining us a little bit later. So I have the pleasure of kicking off the meeting of the Beverly Planning Board for January 15th, 2025. Happy New Year, everyone. And I just want to remind people that this meeting is being broadcast live by BevKim. Thank you very much, BevKim. And additionally, people are able to participate and attend the meeting virtually. So I'll just read a quick explanation on that pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, Section 40, adopted on March 29th, 2023. This meeting of the City of Beverly Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend via remote participation may do so through the Google Meet information provided at the end of the agenda. Additionally, since we don't have any members who are of the planning board who are attending remotely, all of our votes will be by a show of hands, et cetera. We don't have to do a roll call vote on each motion, et cetera. So we'll be able to proceed that way. And I guess we'll begin the agenda. Item number one on the agenda is subdivision approval not required plans. Mr. Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. So we can move to number two on the agenda. And that is the request for release from covenant and establishment of performance guarantee for the definitive subdivision for 63 Sturdivant Street, Simes Development and Permitting LLC applicant. And I believe Mr. Ruda is here to kick us off. If you could join us at the microphone and sort of explain your request this evening and what you're interested in having us do, and we'll see if members have any questions.
Sure. We've completed all the infrastructure with the exception of the finished pavement, the curbs, and the asbills. So City of Beverly's engineering department has reviewed everything, and we're bonding the remaining work. So what we're asking for is a vote on the tri-party agreement and the lot releases.
Okay.
The first would be the lot releases. That's the Form H. It's here. They've signed it. It will need to be notarized at some point by Ellen or by the chair on behalf of the board. But you can vote to accept the Form H. Release Form, which releases the plan, releases lots one, two, and three from their current covenant, recorded Form G. Covenant, so that then the tri-party agreement for the performance guarantee can be established.
And then my understanding is, once we do that, we move to the performance guarantee. The tri-party agreement is a $75,000 bond.
That's correct.
That would cover, actually more than cover the work that's left to complete.
Pretty much so.
Do members have any questions? Yes, Wayne.
I was just trying to remember if there were any conditions on that that we'd need to check and see if have been fulfilled.
Several conditions. They've all been fulfilled. Most work had to do with HOA agreements. We've got a draft of their HOA agreement reviewed by the planning department and the engineering department. They've met all of the conditions that are on there. The one that was kind of unique to this one was for Lot Two with the guaranteed planting for the screening wall between that lot and the neighborhood behind on Mathew Street. And that's included in the HOA docs.
It's all done.
Yep. Thank you.
When is the remaining work anticipated to be completed?
Probably April or May. We could have done it in the fall, but we wanted everything to sit over the winter before we put down the finish coat.
You're talking about the paving.
Yes. So there's a binder down. And, you know, you don't put the finish coat down until you put the curbs down. So we wanted it to sit over the winter, just in case, you know, you're moving that much dirt, something could heave.
Okay.
According to their tri-party, they have, the work will be completed by October 24, 2025.
Yeah, it'll be done by June.
Which is two years from the original decision of the definitive subdivision.
It'll be done by June.
Any other questions? So I would entertain a motion regarding the first order of business, and that's the release of the covenant.
I'm just trying to word it, I suppose. Mr. Chair, move to accept the Form H. Release Form for 63 Sturdivant Street applicant. I should have that in front of me. I apologize. Applicant Simes Development and Permitting LLC.
Seconded by Ellen Flannery. Any discussion? Question comes on the motion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The vote is six to nothing. Moving to the next. Yes?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the tri-party agreement for 63 Sturdivant Street, applicant Simes Development and Permitting LLC.
Seconded.
Do we need the amount or the date?
Can you give any, say, add an amount to that?
I would love to amend my motion, once I get it back open again in front of me. The tri-party agreement, specifically the, is it a bond? Sorry. In the amount of $75,000 pursuant to work to be completed by October 24th, 2025.
Seconded by Ellen Flannery. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The vote is six to nothing.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. So I'll get with the chair to get these notarizing, get them back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the request for release of performance guarantee for Hickory Hill Way. Do we have anyone here from the, representing the applicant?
Does not look like it.
Well, why don't we actually put that to the side for now and see whether or not it would be good to get that done, but we'll just.
That's all.
Hold that, yeah.
Gary Patch or Bob Griffin.
Okay, so we'll move on to number four on the agenda, which is setting public hearings. So the first is request to set public comment period and public hearing. Open space residential design, number 13-25, initial review application, yield plan, and initial review. 38 Stanley Street, applicant is Waring School Inc., Timothy Backland, head of school. So.
There might be some more information.
The review site plan contains site context map, existing conditions, site analysis plan, yield plan that shows four proposed lots, three OSRD concept plans. So this will be our second one in motion at the same time.
Second one in motion at the same time, and then after not having one for six years.
Yeah, weird.
Yep.
Yeah. So we have that. We also have a fairly full February meeting, especially since one of the items on our agenda here is probably going to be moved to February 12th. So, you know, I think maybe March 12th just would be a good opportunity.
Does that work?
Yeah.
And move to set the public hearing for the open space residential design of 13-25 for March 12th, 2025.
Seconded by George. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six to nothing. So that hearing will take place on March 12th. Next. We had, let's see, the, was, do we have one more? Wait a second. My.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it for setting public hearings.
Okay, I thought that was it. I thought we had another one. Okay, continued modification request. Number five on our agenda is the continued modification, modification of site plan review, number 165-2450 Balt Street, also known as 181 Elliott Street, Coming Center. Applicant Beverly Commerce Park LLP. Mr. Ravini, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. Yourself?
Very good. Happy New Year.
To you as well, to you all as well. Thank you. My name's Michael Lavany. I'm an architect with Coming Properties. With me this evening is Steve Dohasky, the senior vice president and general manager of Coming Center. Sorry, I keep moving away from this, right? We're representing the applicant Beverly Commerce Park LLC regarding the project that you just mentioned.
When we last left our heroes before the holidays, we had deemed this to be minor in nature. However, you were going to be looking into, first of all, having a conversation with the engineering department.
Which happened.
And also meeting with the design review board. So you have some updates and additional information to share with us this evening.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I'll let you take the floor.
You did half of my job. I appreciate it. So yes, that is correct. We were here on December 17th. And this board left us with the charge to go back to the design review board and share the modifications with the design review board, which we did on January 9th. And the design review board prepared a, let's say, a positive recommendation that they approved the changes, which I'm assuming Mr. Clausen shared with all of you folks. Also, one other, one of the most significant question that I think came out of the last meeting, other than that part, was that we would engage the engineering department and just to confirm that the added units were not going to have a negative impact on the municipal systems. We have done that. I did that with an email communication, and I also shared that with Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, I didn't get that to the board because it came just in at this afternoon, but yes, it's, everything's fine.
Yep. The city engineer was fine with it, as we did not change the size of the water or the sewer service. So she felt like, hey, there is no, and our civil engineer and our plumbing engineers all agreed that we didn't need to change the size of the services. So she was in agreement with that. And I think we, besides that, I don't think there was anything of significance, unless you had more questions, which I'm happy to. You as a board, I'm sorry, had more questions that you would like to ask.
Perhaps we would, do you have anything? Okay, you've put this up. What are we looking at right here?
Just, oh, he plans that. I'm trying to find a good page for it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to pull it up and discuss if anybody had any comments. We're happy to go through some stuff.
So perhaps you can just run through what the design review board has recommended? Because the other thing is, this is a public meeting, so it's good to actually talk through the things rather than just go in shorthand on documents.
Yeah, no, that's fair. That's fair. So the biggest, the biggest, I think the biggest conversation we had with the design review board was the color changes. So we went from a really, I think, a more aggressive, maybe a more contemporary look to something a little softer, with lighter colors, lighter tones, a little more what we called the ocean, you know, kind of an ocean look as opposed to something that stood out and kind of punched you in the face. And the design review board, to a person, I'm going to represent that, felt that it was a much better look, and they were really happy with the way it wound up being modified. You know, regarding the height, they recognized what we were doing with the height of the building and understanding that just removing the berm, the roof stayed at the same elevation. So that wasn't a challenge for them at all as well. So I think it was definitely, it was very much focused on the materials and the overall look of it. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep. So the, yeah, I think I covered all the things that we talked about. One thing that did come up was, so we built a retaining wall on the east that was on the plans and had intended to be there. And, you know, we had shown it on our renderings as, yeah, on the east side there. We'd shown it on the renderings on the original application as being stone faced. What we wound up doing, because of the amount of material there, we used precast concrete blocks. And our intention all along was to skin that because it's not very pretty. And the board just recommended and made it a condition that we do indeed skin that with a thin faced stone that looks like. And if you could call up the renderings, maybe, you know, might give you a better look of what we're talking about here. If you keep going. Maybe if you go back, I think they might be at the beginning. Maybe not. Oh, yeah. No, they should be at the beginning. No, they're not. All right, so you don't have the, you just have the application set. You don't have the rendering. So the renderings had shown a nice kind of ashlar looking stone on that wall. And like I said, our intention all along was to address that, and they just confirmed that and conditioned it in their approval letter.
I think that the condition you're talking about is that a stone skin is added to the block wall on the east and north elevations to improve the appearance of the block wall in these locations. So.
Yeah. And our intention was to do that. The north wall was, there was, we had to fill in a couple of places where we changed in driveways. So we had to rebuild that wall there as well. So that wall should look, it should look no different than it did from day one, like it's been there all along. It's a nice wall, actually, and it will look exactly the same.
So the walls are the same all around?
Yeah.
Yep.
Was it discussion at DRB of the, I think the jealousy, patios were changed somewhat? I don't remember what they were before or what they've changed to.
Yeah, there was some, we talked about some of the balconies that had changed in some of the locations. They moved from the sides of the building. You know what? It might make more sense, and I hate to do this, for me to call up my stuff. If I could have a minute and I can just, I'll plug in my computer.
Certainly, thank you.
For the record, I call those jealousy. I meant, I meant to say Juliet.
Juliet.
Yeah, exactly.
I was, I was thinking maybe there was something from Romeo and Juliet. There was certainly jealousy involved.
I was thinking of jealous. Jalousy windows, jalousy windows, the slats of glass, maybe?
There you go.
Jealous, jealousy, jealousy, jealousy.
I don't want to be on record as misspeaking.
We would just, we would just say, this is how it's pronounced.
Right, everybody's wrong. I'm right about this.
Being of the old.
All right.
Juliet.
Let me go to escape.
Juliet.
There we go. And then you can do your magic to get down.
We appreciate the hundreds of people who are watching at home, your patience as we attend to this technical item. We'd like to be able to show for the record what we're discussing.
For prosperity, someone wants to join.
For prosperity, I mean, it's a permanent record. YouTube is forever.
What did I say? Wow, I'm just one thing after the other. Must be the guns.
Thank you. A little bit of patience.
Mr. Ravini, of course.
Okay, so now. I click on my thing?
You gotta click on the present.
All right, I'll go back to you. Join now?
Yeah.
Look at that guy right there. This one? All right. So now I need to go to this.
You can go back to your regular.
Okay. Full screen, okay. All right. So.
You should be able to, you should be able to just go to your Acrobat window, not have to show that window.
So hit Stop Sharing?
No, don't hit Stop Sharing. Just go to.
So I know how to put together.
On the other hand.
It was, oh, it was Ken. There you go. So I, I.
Mr. Clausen.
Strike that last thing. I can do everything.
That is counsel, that is clerk laptop one, right?
There we go.
Yes.
We have to tune in. There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, we're set.
Thank you.
So I don't know how to get rid of this thing here. All right, we're gonna leave it there. Okay, so go back to the balconies that we had. One of the questions we talked about, the balconies, and in the previous scheme, on the upper floor, you can see like north elevations faces Balt Street. Balcony was here, and then we had balconies on the side. We moved the balconies to the, to the balch, in this case, to the balch. So the balconies really only changed on the corners. We moved them to the Balt Street side, and we did the same thing here. And it was just as we put, as we changed the units and moved things around, it just made more sense. We changed the units because we added units in the same footprint. The box changed a little bit, and it just made more sense. added units in the same footprint, the box changed a little bit, and it just made more sense to stack them that way, as you can see, we still had some, like you, like you said, the Juliet balconies kind of in here, they still lined up in there, and they still lined up in here, and we still had the same in here, so they kind of stayed the same pretty much everywhere, the architectural language changed a little bit, but they moved, they definitely moved on the corners, south elevation, similarly, they were on the ends at the beginning, and not, and, but the, but the top two corner units were on the fifth floor, were on the south facade, we just moved them all, those all remain the same, they just changed in the two corners, pretty much, there's still a kind of recessed balcony here, what we did do, actually, and we still left the one here, but we actually took the balconies out of this one, and we just made them the Juliet balconies or the Marriott balconies, just to add a little bit of more diversity in the units, some people maybe wanted the extra hundred or hundred and fifty square feet in their space as opposed to, so we just tried to diversify the units a little bit, so we took the balconies out of that particular stack of, of units, so that was kind of, in a nutshell, you can see here, right, the balconies used, were here, and now we've moved them to the, again, the north facade, they were on the west facade here, and now we've moved them to the south facade here, on the ends. That make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, I'm just thinking, a month went by, and it, to me, it looks way better than it did, if we wait another month, it'll look even way better.
You really want us coming back here again?
I don't know, if it improves that much in a month, yes, come back.
Well, thank you, thank you for, and, we were really happy with the first product, it wasn't, but you get time to tinker and, and put this together, and as you start, it's like any, any project that comes before this board, or any board, you know, you come here with a certain mindset, and you got it halfway figured out, but not all the way figured out, and as you get into the details, things tweak, that's, that's all, that's just a natural progression, I guess, but thank you for, I'll take that as a compliment.
Meant that way.
Any other questions? I just, you know, echo what Mr. Miller said, I do think that with the change, that the design review board, you worked on with the design review board, does look, especially for such a large building, where none exists right now, a bit softer, and actually, it looks less, less like a school, and the other one, to me, just looked a little more institutional, but that's just my personal feeling, not, thank God, I'm not an architect, okay, so.
I'm not holding that against you.
But just want to say that, but even more importantly, I think, appreciate the fact that you had a chance to talk in the meantime to the city engineer and make sure, because I know for me, that, you know, solves any questions that I might have had about whether or not we were faced with approving something, and, and then have an, uh-oh, we should have asked that question moment, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, my bad, I should have had that in advance, you know, we did it internally, should have thought to bring it externally to the city, but that's understandable, you can't know all the answers, I think I know them all, except how to turn on the computer sometime.
Any other questions? Yes, George?
I feel like I'm confused now, the bottom renders are the ones you showed us last month, correct?
The, the bottom renders, yes, of what the proposed modification is, yeah, exactly.
The only thing the design review board said was the stone on the wall.
Yes, yes, they were.
I want that for the record.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
It was the stone on the wall, Mr. Gomes, but also the fact that the colors changed, the finishes changed, other elements changed, that we wanted to have a look at and did, and we're very pleased with the changes.
And we're using the same material palette, just different colors and different configurations.
Yep.
Mr. Beckwith, would you like a motion?
I would like a motion, and for this one, since we already went through our findings and such, I, yeah, it's, it's there with, with all the different conditions, et cetera.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve, grant the modification request to site plan review number 165-24 at 50 Ball Street, with the following conditions, Mr. Clausen, would you like me to enumerate? Number one, all previous conditions of approval from the planning board decision dated January, June 20, 2024, are still applicable, including conditions contained in the comment letters submitted by various department heads, boards, and commissions, which are attached to the previous planning board decision and incorporated herein by reference. A, letter dated April 24, 2024, from Captain Jacob Krailing, City of Beverly Fire Department, Bureau of Fire Prevention. B, letter dated April 26, 2024, from Darlene Nguyen, AICP and Vice Chair of the City of Beverly Parking Traffic Commission. C, letter dated April 29, 2024, from Laura Delacai, MP, MPH, Director of the City of Beverly Board of Health. Letter dated May 17, 2024, from Jared Contrada, Associate Planner of the City of Beverly Design Review Board. E, letter dated May 21, 2024, from Lisa Chandler, PE, City Engineer for the City of Beverly Engineering Department. F, comments in the City of Beverly Central Square Permitting System from Jim Butler, Director of Municipal Inspections. Number one, there needs to be five handicap parking spaces along the one van accessible space, and number two, 10% of the units need to be designed for people with disabilities. G, letter dated June 5, 2024, from Michael Avani, in response to the City of Beverly Engineering Department comments. H, letter dated June 5, 2024, from Michael Avani, in response to the City of Beverly Fire Department comments. And I, letter dated June 5, 2024, from Michael Avani, in response to the City of Beverly Health Department comments. Number two, the conditions contained in the letter of recommendation dated January 10, 2025, from Kenneth Clausen, Assistant Planning Director for the City of Beverly Design Review Board, which attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. A, a stone skin is added to block wall on the east and north elevations to improve the appearance of the block wall in these locations.
Wait a second. Seconded by Gomes, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes six to nothing.
Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Patience with us.
Thank you.
Stop sharing.
Before we recess for public hearings, I wanted to just take a look at, I know that on number 10, the continued public comment on the open space residential design for 184, 186 Hart Street, that the applicant has requested that this matter be continued to the February 12, 2025 meeting, I think it makes sense to have us make a decision on that, prior to going into public hearings, et cetera, because anyone that's at home, is joining via Google Meet or here, we should probably just make a decision on that, and then, if they're, and people are here for that, they can go on their way until next month, so, Mr. Clausen, did they give a reason for the request to the 12th?
They're still completing the site distance studies that were requested by the board last month.
Okay, so we don't have that new information, so, and indicate that they would have it for the 12th?
They requested it continued to the 12th, so.
To the 12th.
I don't have an answer if they. They requested that they be continued to next month, they did not clarify if they'll have that information by then, just that they wanted a continuance until the 12th.
Any discussion? I entertain a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, we continue the, I move to continue, continue the public hearing for the public comment period on concept plans for the open space residential design for application number 12-24 in 184 and 186 Hart Street, CS Hart LLC, to February 12, 2025.
Seconded by Gomes, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes six to nothing. So, ladies and gentlemen, if you're here in person or online, and you're here to talk about 184, 186 Hart Streets, OSRD project, that discussion will take place for next month, on February 12, at our next meeting. Okay. So now, we're, our next items are two public hearings, so I entertain a motion to recess in public hearings. Moved by Flynnery, seconded by Gomes, all those in favor? Opposed, okay, we're now in public hearings, the first that we'll be discussing is to continue public hearing for site plan review number 186-240 Trask Lane, Corcoran Trask Lane LLC, applicant, and, yes.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Miranda Samasco, from Gloveski &amp; Gloveski at 8 Washington Street, on behalf of the applicant, Corcoran Trask Lane, and just to let you know who's with us on behalf of the team tonight, Emily Pathier is with Gloveski &amp; Gloveski, we have Peter Mahoney and Tim Corcoran, both from Corcoran, Matthew Latell from UTEAL, the project architect, Bill Brown from Brown &amp; Sardina, the landscape architects, and Joe Peznola from Hancock Associates, the civil engineer.
Okay, great, for, for those who are here, and you may have been expecting Ellen Hutchinson to be sitting in this chair, she is running a little late, so as Vice Chair, I'm just sitting in, and so I'll be rescued as soon as she walks in the door.
We won't, we'll be nice.
Well, that's appreciated.
All right, so, this, as members will appreciate, is our third public hearing for this project, which is before the planning board for site plan review only, we had appeared before you on November 19 to start off, and we gave everybody an overview, I think, of the design, traffic, and civil engineering elements of the project, the last time we were here, in December, we had sort of a limited presentation, we brought you up to date on some of the mitigation that the applicant will be proposing in the next, that the applicant is proposing, and that will be reflected in the next iteration of plans, convenience store, public trail access, and a traffic, a monetary contribution to the city to help with transportation planning for this area, we also gave you an, sort of an intermediate presentation on a reduced parking ratio for the project that was prepared in response to, in this case, to a prior board inquiry from the first hearing, and I just want to reiterate that we have not submitted any application for that relief, nor have we formally amended our application to in any way alter the parking that was shown on the original plans, we had that as sort of a discussion, and we're sort of weighing whether it makes sense to proceed in that fashion now, you know, we, taking into account that this project was very specifically designed to not require any zoning relief whatsoever, and so we want to weigh carefully the implications of asking the board to make a discretionary decision in that regard, we think there are good reasons, but we're not going to press that tonight, nor are we, do we intend to present any further until we have a actual application in front of you. So with that, I just wanted to update the board on the various peer review and other proceedings, Conservation Commission, as you know, this project does require CONCOM approval, we just received peer review comments on January 6 from Conservation Commission, we are presently continuing to their February 4 meeting, and I expect that we will get back there probably in February, once the peer review has another turn, we had some city comments, some, some departmental comments from engineering, from the planning department, those came early on, and we submitted our response on December 10, so those are out there, traffic peer review, we've, we got comments for traffic on December 19, so our consultant is currently preparing that response, and we've met with P&amp;T Parking and Traffic twice, while we've been waiting for the results of the peer review, and I anticipate that we'll have a response filed this month, and that we will meet again with them in their early February meeting. Should also, just note, I think I noted this last time, but we also submitted on December 16, a draft environmental impact report to MIPA, that report actually had an updated traffic analysis that was also submitted to Parking and Traffic in late December, so we anticipate further comments from Mass DOT and Parking and Traffic and Peer Review once they've had a chance to digest all of that, and obviously, that will come to the board as well, but it's, it's another, you know, I think it would be beneficial to have others pass on it first, before we send you that paper, and, and I want to say, you know, we certainly appreciate as a team that traffic is really a predominant concern, that everybody has heard from, from commentators throughout these proceedings, and our intent in postponing a more formal presentation on traffic is not to dodge that, but because we want to have the best information to present as consistently as possible, hopefully with the best mitigation possible that everybody has agreed on, before we come back to the board to present sort of a, an interim solution, so we don't plan on presenting any information for traffic until we have some more definitive input. And then last, we have design review, and I think we've made some good progress with design review, we've had three meetings, our last meeting last week, we, we gave a presentation that we're also going to give to you this evening, which was really designed to help members understand the site better, the site layout, and in particular, the grading of the property, these buildings, this site in comparison to the adjoining sites, and also addressing sort of the, some questions that folks have had about the visual prominence of retaining walls and podium walls, I think, let's see, Ellen nodding, and I think DRB was, I think, pleased with the presentation, and they found it helpful, and we're actually on pause there, pending a, some landscape review, and pending any further design revisions that come out of the peer review process, but otherwise, I think that we are fairly on solid ground with DRB, and we just can't ask for a recommendation until they have a final set of plans in front of them, so, based on some public comments here as well, we, as I said, we thought that the presentation would be very helpful, and that's what we thought we would give you tonight, and then have an opportunity for board questions and and public comment, so Matthew Latell's gonna take this.
Okay, we're all set, as Miranda said, this is a presentation that we gave to the design review board last week, I think in general, our goal here is to create some drawings, highlight some issues of concern, and basically, create a presentation that allows you to understand a little bit better how the design is working, you all know where we are, just a quick refresher that we have six buildings on two sites, Site A and Site B, we were asked to. We were asked to give a better sense of how the grading really works, where the grade is going to be modified, how it relates to Cherry Hill, Apple Village, the rest of the context, what were the conditions at the base of these, of different buildings. So we've created this, this drawing in a sense that sort of summarizes those elements. And the information that's on these drawings are consistent with the, the plan application drawings. They've just been simplified so that we can all understand them a little bit better. So, these edges are sort of color-coded to show where there are different kinds of conditions at grade. So yellow indicates major building entries. This, I guess it's sort of pinkish color now, indicates where there are residential or residential amenities at grade. And then the sort of green areas are areas where the parking is either sort of at grade or, or partly below grade at the ground level. This dashed, or dotted line, I should say, indicates the sort of primary pedestrian paths, both to the proposed satellite parking area, as well as the connections to, to Site B, and in and around the site. You'll also notice that there are a series of spot elevations to explain where the various heights are. We've set our ground level for the project, let's call it zero. So we're approximately, I don't know, five to zero feet above Apple Village here. Cherry Hill is at 20 feet below the center of our site. The topography of the site is generally, as we are finding it, this high spot already exists. Obviously, there's some modification around retaining walls, but there's a lot of topography in grade that, that's sort of already there. We're also showing the location of the retaining walls. This was another sort of question that people wanted to understand, where they were, how tall are they? So we are indicating in this sort of dark blue color where the retaining walls are. A lot of them are sort of behind, if you will, or up against existing vegetation and won't be visible. We were also asked to, to show how close they were to the limit of work. And I'll talk about a little bit more detail about how the wall detailing will preserve as many existing trees as, as possible. We have a little bit of a zoom in here to some of the retaining walls to show how sort of exposed they are. This is at the entry to Site A. There's a retaining wall there that goes from about three feet above the lower part of the grade to about seven feet. There's sort of a five-foot-tall retaining wall that runs around the front here to sort of enclose this part of the entry. And then a, a lower wall here, again, probably not visible. There is a, a, a wall here that sort of retains that sort of surface parking area. So as you come in this driveway, you come up, and there is a retaining wall there that I will show you in more detail in a moment. We also sort of cut a, a kind of section through this site. And so this lower section is, is sort of cut diagonally from Apple Village to Cherry Hill, to show exactly what, what's going on here. This is our Building One, our Building Four. There is a sort of, you'll see a little bit of a magenta dashed line here. That's sort of approximately where the existing grade is, but this is cut through that driveway access, and is more or less kind of as it is. This other section is cut through the steeper part of the site. So we're more or less at grade with Apple Village, but at this end of the site where we are locating some surface parking, there is a retaining wall at this edge. Again, it's up against existing trees, and it probably won't be visible. This is a view. We were asked to create some sort of visualization or perspective that described the relationship of all these elements together, particularly as you approach from this side. This is Cherry Hill on the left. This is our project here. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the sort of ground level of the proposed project is about 20 feet above the existing ground level of Cherry Hill. What you're seeing here is, are some existing vegetation that will remain, and then a series of plantings that Bill Brown will talk about in more detail later. But also, what you're seeing here are some of those retaining walls that I just mentioned. And again, if I zoom in, this is one that retains one of these sort of outdoor amenity areas. It's approximately five feet, would be probably concealed mostly by some vegetation in the front. And then an approximately a seven or eight-foot wall at the end of the driveway to retain that, that parking area. The material for the retaining walls that is being proposed is a gravity block. It's a large block that has the advantage of not requiring extensive foundations or overexcavation. You'll see from some of these images that the way the, the block is constructed, it is very good at actually being able to be inserted without really disrupting too much of the adjacent greenery. So you can see a wall here, obviously next to some mature trees. They come in different colors, various shades of gray and a kind of rusticated look. This is a fairly tall example. Most of ours are not that tall, but this gives you a visual of, of what those retaining walls will look like, where they are visible. And again, a lot of them will be up against existing trees at the back of the property. Site B, we've done a similar diagram to show the grades. Obviously, there's some very steep grades that drop off to the back. We are approximately, you know, if we're at zero here, Apple Village is about minus 10. And then there is a, a fairly significant retaining wall that runs around most of these edges here to contain this site. With the exception of maybe a tiny piece here, a lot of this retaining wall would not really be visible. It would be up very close to existing trees. You'll see there's sort of active entries and uses in yellow here facing each other, and then the rest would be enclosed parking at, at the grade level. And a highlight of, of some of those elements, a piece up near the front, probably concealed mostly by vegetation. Again, this one is eight feet, also against mature trees. And then 10 feet above grade at this, at this property line right here. We've also cut a section through this project. This is, let's call it Page North-South, where the building needs to essentially be propped up at this sort of edge, where there's a very steep drop-off. Again, we're very close to mature trees. Most of these sort of retaining wall conditions would not be visible. This is a view from Apple Village to show the relative height of the project, what, what would be visible. You can see some of the retaining wall through some of that vegetation that's already there. I think, I believe a lot of this vegetation and trees is on Apple Village property, but as you move back, that vegetation gets thicker, and the wall will be much less visible. There were some questions about the distribution of the amenity spaces, particularly as they relate to how residents might be moving around the site, or moving between Site A and Site There are core amenities, particularly at least a lounge or community room or, or similar thing in every individual building. So there's a kind of base level of community, and then there are specialized functions like the pool, or, you know, the leasing office, or the dog wash that might be specific to another building. But the, the point is, I think every building wants to have a certain amount of amenities so residents can enjoy that, and then there are certain amenities that they may walk to otherwise. With respect to the parking, I think there was concern that, how does it really work? Are people going to be hunting for spaces all over the place? Of the, lost my screen again. It's gone to sleep, but I think I can remember. On Site A, the majority of the spaces that the residents will really need are actually in the buildings, maybe two-thirds of those spaces. Spaces in the build, residents will have to be assigned, or, or rent, or make arrangements to have a space in an enclosed garage, and the ones who don't will be parking on the surface. Again, they'll be, their car will have a sticker, it'll be managed. But the point is, is that residents won't be driving around from garage to garage, or from space to space. They will know where they will need to be parking. And so you won't have residents hunting for, you know, spaces in Building Four when they live in Building One, or, or vice versa. We were asked a little bit to elaborate on some of the materials. I think we've shown you all some of this, our material palette, but specifically, we wanted to talk about the treatment of the podium, what we call the podium level of the, of the buildings, which will be clad in a, in a masonry, in this sort of range of colors. So we will work with a sort of color palette. We will also be using blocks that have maybe different kinds of textures as a way to create patterns or other things that will, will bring a little bit of sort of design intention to the, to those ground levels. And this is not a picture of what our project will look like, but to give you a sense of what this material is and what it can do, the kinds of treatments that are possible. So you'll see some, some very sort of rustic pieces here. You'll see other block walls that look maybe more like sort of subtle brick walls. You see some patterning or variations in the texture. So this is just to give you a sense of the kinds of things that we'll be sort of diving into later as the project becomes designed in, in more, more detail. I will hand this off to Bill Brown, who will talk a little bit, and more specific, more specifically about the landscape sort of screening and treatment at the base of the buildings. So this is the advancer.
That's the advancer.
Yeah.
And then tops the point here.
Second to the top.
That's the point here. Hello, Bill Brown, Brown Sardina, landscape architect. I wanted to speak to, tonight, a little bit about the amenities for the project, disturbance recreation, restoration, screening, irrigation, materials, and planting. And the first slide that we have up is sections and elevations taken for Site A, so you get a sense of what the landscape will look like, looking at the buildings and actually between the buildings. So the, the top elevation is looking at Building A. Building A is the building that's closest to, to Cherry Hill. This is looking on the other side, between Building One and actually Building Four. We wanted to give you a sense of what the landscape would actually look like, probably about year seven. And what it's indicating is the height of the trees. These trees are roughly 28 feet tall. Initially, when, when the trees are going to be installed in this project, they're going to be in the 16 to 18-foot range. So, you know, that's eight feet. It's going to be twice as tall, maybe a little bit taller. They'll be two and a half, two to two and a half inch caliber trees. So this gives you a sense, seven years out. These trees eventually are going to get larger, you know, maybe a third again, or twice as tall as they are, as they mature. But we wanted to give you a sense of what the landscape would look like roughly at year seven. The section that's down below, this is looking at Building Three, and this is looking at Building One. In the foreground, which we obviously can't see, there's a wetland area that actually screens these two buildings from the view looking north. And what this shows is the entrance to the garage, the access drive coming up. This is the driveway between the buildings that takes you up to the intersection, the main intersection, and then we drop down to where the garage is located here. And you can see, again, you know, the trees, what the height will generally be, and, you know, the shrub material that is at the base of these buildings as well. This is Site A. Matthew has described the walls in detail, and I think it was a really good explanation. And the thing to really understand and realize is that there's limited disturbance from the wall into the existing vegetation. So you can see how close the limit of work is to these walls. So the trees are going to be preserved right up against those walls. On the right-hand side, we have the easement for the golf course. So there is a 15-foot setback in that location. These trees are going to be quite tall in the view from the golf course. You know, I think that the trees are probably going to cover up most of the building. So the way the site works in terms of its amenities is that, there we go, is that we have a main intersection here where all the entrances to the buildings are located, and this will be an active space. So you're able then to walk from the building down the sidewalk, and there's a dog park that's located here for all the residents. There's also on-grade an amenity space behind Building One, that's on-grade, and there's amenity spaces that are on the terraces, one story up at each one of the buildings, so that each of the residents in those buildings have an amenity space that they can actually, actually go to. With regard to screening, I think it's important to note, this drawing actually, every one of these trees, every one of these dots, all the shrub materials that are shown on this rendering is actually shown on the landscape plans that are part of the submission. So it's an actual, you know, real drawing. When I look at this, you know, and the size of the trees, to me, it looks like, you know, the, the trees, what they'll look like five years out, seven years out, in terms of the landscape density. We are providing screening along this edge with evergreen trees and deciduous trees to screen Cherry Hill. We have a dense screen along this edge, Apple Village, and to here as well. We're using a combination of deciduous trees and evergreen trees, but what we're also doing, you know, with these areas, and particularly along this edge where we're screening Building One from the Cherry Hill condos, is that we're using native shrubs that get anywhere between three and 12 to 15 feet tall, so that we're renaturalizing all the edges to this property. There is on, what's interesting about Site A is, there's no lawn on Site A. So what we've done is, in all these areas that are landscaped areas between the buildings and between the parking areas, and between, you know, Cherry Hill and, and Apple Village, we're seeding it with a conservation wildlife mix that does not need to be maintained. It'll be returned to nature again. The way we do that is we seed it initially, for the first couple of years, it may need to be cut down to roughly eight inches, so it regenerates and grows, but we won't have to, you know, spend the time, nor the air pollution and whatever associated with it in these areas, because they'll all be naturalized. See if I can get the right button here. So this is a view, looking Cherry Hill is on the left. This vegetation that you see here, this is the wetland area, so it actually does a great job of screening our project. We do have vegetation that we're planting along this edge. This building, the finished floor elevation is roughly This building, the finished floor elevation is roughly 10 feet above the parking lot here. This wall that you're seeing actually is holding up the dog park. And that's where the dog park is located. So this whole edge, it's sort of an elevated slope, if you will, going up to the building, will be re-vegetated.
Can you go back to that, please?
Sure.
When you say 10 feet to the first floor elevation, you mean 10 feet to your lowest level parking?
Yes, yeah.
The actual first floor of the building is another 10, 12 feet above that?
Yeah, the parking area is roughly 108 to 110. The building finished floor elevation is 118. The parking is below that.
While you're there, is the dog park, is it fenced in?
Yes, it is fenced in.
What type of fences?
It'll be a chain link fence, 42 inches high, or excuse me, four feet high. Site B, we have two buildings on site B, building five and building six. You can see the location of the walls along this edge, you know, we're returning to existing grade very quickly. The landscape scheme is similar. We do have an outdoor space, an amenity space associated with the fitness center that's on grade. In addition to that, there's another amenity space that's on top of the garage here. There's another amenity space on top of the garage there as well. We have a dog park that's located here for these residents. We do have some lawn on this part of the project. We do have some lawn in this location, some lawn along the edges, and some lawn here as well. And in that location, everything else, again, is the meadow mix, the conservation wildlife mix. And then the lighting, we have two different pole lights on the project. The one on the left is actually a 14-foot pole. These generally are in vehicular areas that pedestrians are on. So the areas between the buildings will be the shorter poles scaled to pedestrians, but also used to light the parking areas. The fixture, this fixture is being used in the parking areas. That pole height is roughly 25 feet tall. We have some light and security ballers at the intersections that we're using. And then we have catenary fixtures that are going to be strung between the buildings that are featured intersection from building to building that are going to light that intersection. And that's it.
So I think that's the extent of our sort of visual presentation this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Questions?
Yes.
So you want to go around here with the gravity blocks?
There we go. The renderings that show the gravity blocks. So the one on the top right kind of caught my eye a little bit. From a safety standpoint, it's a many consideration. I know those gravity blocks usually hollow, they have some cavities in them. Any sort of, it looks like a little bit of a drop-off there from grade where the car is. I know the gravity walls can go up considerably, or you can install fence posts in them and have a fence there. I'm just kind of, I saw that and I thought, you know, if a car was not in park, or if they press the gas, you're stepping off a little bit. Just wanted to comment that, something to think about.
We got to get the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah, Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates. So any of the gravity block walls that are higher than four feet will feature fall protection. So fence for people that are, to protect people. Any that are subject to vehicular, there'll be also a guard rail. And in the case where we have both, it'll be integrated, wooden guard rail with a 414 chain link fence for the fall protection. And that's a requirement of building code.
Okay, thank you.
Before you walk away, what's the tallest wall anticipated? I mean, you know.
20 feet.
20 feet?
Yeah.
So?
So these blocks, when you see the lower left, that's actually larger blocks that have the fascia that's segmented. So the blocks themselves are 42 inches wide by 16 inches tall by about two feet deep. And some blocks are hollow, and then they backfill them with stone. Some are solid. I mean, the whole concept here is that the blocks themselves, they call it gravity block because it's the block, the weight of the block itself that is the structural integrity of the wall. And the beauty of installation is you take out just the top and subsoil, 12 inches, nine, 12 inches down, a little bit wider than the block, and you put your first course down. And then you build it from there, and you fill on the fill side, and you never have to go to the other side of the wall ever again. So the photographs that we had that showed the walls, the one on the top right is, was eventually a 10 or 15-foot-high wall. So that's at the initial insulation. So, and the wall on the lower right-hand side, you could see that's after the completion of the wall. But what's important to note is just how close we can get to the existing vegetation, the existing trees, without impacting them. And again, once we start the wall, it's kind of a barrier for the construction, and there's no need to go down there again. So we can immediately vegetate it within a week of finishing that first couple courses and have that grow in. So it's, it really, from the conservation commission standpoint, it really provides that extra protection. And the erosion control barrier really doesn't ever come into play again, because everything's contained on the development side of the site.
So moving away from the environmental thing, when I think of a 20-foot stone wall or 10-foot stone wall or something like that, it brings me back, this is always dangerous, I know, it brings me back, my dad was in the Navy, stationed in Hawaii, and I was four years old. And all of the kids, it was something similar on the base, where the kids would all just, we'd play with our yo-yos, we'd do all that sort of stuff, and the walls were like 12 feet, you know? We were oblivious to anything ever happening to us. And, you know, so the day the kid toppled down and broke his arm was, you know, an interesting day. I'm just wondering about safety in terms of.
Yeah, that's why I say that.
Of that, from both sides.
Yeah.
From both sides, not just cars coming off the end, pedestrian, there's a fence. What about from the other side in terms of, you know, kids or, I mean, what's going to keep people from trying to climb the wall, or, I'm just curious?
Yeah. Well, nothing's going to stop people from going to the base of the wall and trying to climb it. It's not really climbable from the standpoint of being able to grab onto anything. It's got texture to it, but it doesn't have the ability to, even a seasoned rock climber couldn't get a hold on these things. And from the top side, the building code dictates that we, anything over four feet, we need to have fall protection. So it needs to be well protected, either with just fence or a combination of fence and guard rail. And that's any, you know, throughout, so it has to be continuous for just that reason.
Wait.
The building's designed to incorporate solar heating of the interior spaces? And is there any capacity for energy generation at all anywhere in the project?
We will make provisions for PV on the roof of the building. I don't know what you mean by solar heating of the interior.
Yeah, the wall, the window space is facing south, so that.
Yeah. So this, the intention is to design this to passive house standards, which is an extremely high standard of energy efficiency. And as we proceed with the design, all of that gets incorporated into the energy modeling of the building. So sunlight is captured, and the south-facing walls is offset by other north-facing, you know, glazing. All of that gets sort of captured in the model for efficiency.
But it looks as though your modeling would indicate that installing solar photovoltaic systems at this juncture is not cost-effective for you, because you're not designing it. And you have no solar canopies or anything such as we have all over the city, but you have decided that it doesn't work for you here.
So on the, Peter Mahoney, John and Corcoran Company, on the private side, solar is not feasible without subsidy. It's just not, it's like, well, beyond, so the, all the solar that's getting done today on private developments is subsidized through either tax credits, tax incentives, or rebates to the state's program. So given that, so we will design it so that we can put them on the roof. If the incentive programs are available, that'd make them feasible. But it's impossible to say, in four years from now that the program is available, that we will need to make a solar project work.
I'm not going to debate that, but for the record, I don't agree.
Okay. Have the discussion separately.
Happy to.
Yeah.
George?
What is the difference in height between the two sites? I know we were kind of setting both to zero to give the idea of context with the neighbors, but what's the difference between site A and site B's zero?
Yeah, that's zero on site A relates to elevation 118. And on site B, it's 108.
It's 10 feet lower?
10 feet lower.
Is that a fairly continuous grade between the two? Is there a?
Well, if you go back to the.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
The overall site. Yeah, they're really not proximate. Apple Village is in between, so.
Yep, that, thank you.
So if you go into the Apple Village northeast parking lot, which we have an entrance into, and then you work your way down through Apple Village, yeah, it's kind of continuous, down gradient, down gradient. You get back to, you know, that lower section. So if you went from that northeast parking lot to the entry into the emergency drive, it's a fairly shallow, continuous grade as you're moving across the Apple Village side. And you get down to that vantage point that we said, we've got a 10-foot wall on site B.
Yep, sorry, sorry. I guess I'm looking more from if you're moving between site A and site B, you know, going out the entrance onto, is it Manor Road that goes down into Apple Village? And then going on to Trask Lane to move towards site B? Is that all a fairly continuous grade that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a new side, new sidewalk will put along Trask as you move down there.
What's the distance?
I think it's about 500 feet, 500 to 700 feet.
Would you say that's as the crow flies, or would you say that's like a walking estimate?
It's walking.
I raise it because I noticed in the, and I hadn't caught this, so shame on me, I suppose, I noticed in the peer review, there was a comment about, you know, some of the parking numbers, you know, between the two sites, and being relatively overparked on site B versus site A. So I think it's.
Yeah, we're at a, about a 1.7 on site A.
Yep.
And we're at a 2.3 on site B. So site B is overparked. But when we talk about what we really believe we need, and as we talk about, as we get into more and more of that discussion, we believe that the ratio is 1.6. So a lot of our, a lot of, when we get there, and if we start to present plans that reduce the parking, the majority of the reduction will be on site B, so that we end up balanced with about a 1.6 on each.
Thank you.
So I was wondering if there were any renderings that were done by artists who weren't looking during July at the site? And whether or not you had any artists working in December or January that might be, you know, doing renderings that showed trees without leaves on them, maybe the leaves on the ground? So that's another way of saying, I know that you're talking a lot about the trees and their maturity and their height and this, but most of the ones that I were seeing here were not, were deciduous trees. And so for six months of the year or so, small buds, no leaves. So do you have any renderings to show whether or not the walls and the height and things like that is more noticeable during half the season?
We haven't done that rendering, but I take your point. I will say that the existing vegetation around this wetland here that we're not touching is probably dense enough that even in winter, it's fairly opaque. But I take your point about the rest of this. I do know that there are a wide variety of both deciduous and conifers all, you know, throughout. But if it were something that we had to do, we could certainly look into that.
You know, I mean, I think it would be good to see, and to your point, in terms of even during the winter months, if just the number of trees, you know, given a little bit of distance, you're able to show that there's a lot going on there that doesn't make these buildings jump out and seem as large as what we've heard residents are fearful that they're going to seem. I think that would be beneficial to see. Any other questions at this point? Yes, Marcus?
I know we talked about traffic in that upcoming meeting. I just, it's been in my mind for a while. I'm not sure what feasibility would be or anything, but has MasDOT, has he been contacted or anything about some sort of a, an off-ramp or some sort of a bridge that can get you directly from the site to the south highway? Maybe, I'm not sure if they could help with that, or if you say, hey, we're going to put 800 units in, X amount of people, we think we might need this, what that might look like, or if they might be able to assist with any of that?
Well, I guess the answer is, first of all, they, the state is reviewing this as part of, that's what the MEPA review is. So they will be reviewing in a very detailed way with MasDOT, you know, operationally how this all works on the highway system. You know, I know from working on other projects in the city that designing and getting approved and getting funding for off-ramps from 128 for a specific project takes decades. So I think it's probably one that's in the queue for the city. I think this one, and there's at least one other that comes to mind, are things that, you know, I think certainly conversations have been had. I don't, the applicant has not had those conversations. Typically, those are advanced. Typically, those are advanced, more at the municipal level to the state.
Okay. I just, I know that would settle some of the objections and put the traffic in the emergency access, and I'm not sure who could...
The one thing I will say about that particular intersection is that it's in Danvers. While the site's in Beverly, the off-the interchange is actually in Danvers.
Sounds complicated.
That's right.
Point of interest, there was once, and may still be, a tunnel that goes under the...
There was. It's no longer.
It's completely blocked now?
It was, the town of Danvers asked for it to be closed off, so. That's my understanding, that it's no longer. It was there for a good long while, but no longer.
I've been here a good long while.
Yes, Ellen?
Miranda, just one question relative to parking question, whether it be yourself or from Matthew. With delivery vehicles and or the mail services, are there going to be any particular on-the-surface parking, any place in particular for them to park safely at the buildings?
I think the answer is, yeah, and Matthew maybe can direct us to it, but there will be spaces that are designated for deliveries, for move-in, for UPS and things like that.
I believe there are spaces reserved here specifically for deliveries. I think generally, the sort of what we call the on-street parking will be open, but there may be a few that might be reserved for the leasing office or for other kinds of special visitors.
So, do we have a sign-up sheet here? We don't. Well, at this point, since the board doesn't have questions right now, we, this is a public hearing, we'll open this up for public comment. Couple of things, we've had two different times when people came up. If you, I just encourage if you have something different to say or new to say, or rather than the same, you're welcome to say whatever you want when you come up, you know, within decorum, but...
Is he allowed to be within decorum?
Yeah. But it would be most helpful, I think, to have some comments that reflected to what we've seen and talked about this evening, if that's possible, in addition to whatever else you have to say. And once we're done seeing who in the room would like to speak, then we'll go to the folks who are visiting and participating via Google Meet. Anyone here, if you could go to the podium and please, everyone, when you speak, please start with your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Patrick Knight for Duck Pond Road, Beverly, Mass, the unit right next to this. I'll try not to repeat a number of the things I've said before, but my biggest concern is I'm looking at the traffic and safety reports, and I don't see any, anywhere mentioned the intersection of Trask Lane, Duck Pond Road, and Manor Road. The actual site, the closest report I see is about a quarter mile away. This is, it's a small, our intersection, our road really can't fit two cars at once going in and out. Two of the entrances are going to be using this. I don't understand how this will work. Just cherry, just Duck Pond Road alone, please just drive down there and you'll see what I mean. Have one car coming in, one car coming out, and you'll see what I'm talking about. That's a big concern. The other is Apple Village lets out right at that same intersection. The 160 units from up above will be now letting out at that intersection, and now the additional 330 units coming out either in the front or in the side road. All of them converge on this intersection that's just simply not made for this. We need a study done there. All of these are done, but it's impossible. It's unsafe, and that's a big part of my complaint. The other issue still is the same thing without another way in, another way out. We've confirmed that the second entrance just isn't drivable by vehicles, by cars. It's an emergency. Fire trucks can do it. I've confirmed this with Captain Grayling. Cars just can't use it. So, the only emergency entrance is at, exit is at the main entrance. And as you know, that's just not normal procedure. So, that's what I'd like to stick with for now. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. We haven't, you've noticed, as a board, really gone in deep to traffic yet. I mean, we're waiting that the peer review has just come back, is being analyzed, looked at. We've had some time, but not a lot of time to look into it. So, we'll, this will be very pertinent, I think, for future...
And one other thing to add, I know that we're considering talking about reductions. Nothing's been said at this point in time, but just understand that this is an island. There's no way in and no way out. Everyone in there is going to have to have a vehicle. Every household with two people will have two vehicles. Even if they're both not using it the same day, one is going to be sitting at home while the two of them are in the same vehicle. Just do a vote here and see how many households have only one vehicle. I'm not sure if you're willing to do that, one out of five, six, seven, so.
Again, with that, we don't have a proposal in front of us to that. We appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Knight. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Tom McDonald. I'm at 4 Wright Cliff Road in Beverly. And aside from the traffic and safety, I live in Raymond Farms, which is on the downside of the hill, on the other side of the park, next to the other park. And for us, you know, it's going to be a five-story building on top of a really big hill, so it's going to glow in the dark. You know, there's going to be like a million windows with lights, there's going to be parking lot lights, there'll be, you know, a lot of light pollution. One of my concerns is on the, as you're looking at the screen, at the end of Duck Pond Road, at the end of it, there's like a, the looparound, that 270, that goes into the parking area. So, my concern is that we're at the, on the other side of that, so every car coming in and every car coming out is going to be hitting us with their headlights. In other words, the, each car will be fanning our house with their headlights going in and going out, every single car. And right now, during the wintertime, you know, you were talking about the trees, a lot of trees have already been taken down to do some of the preliminary site work. And even though in the literature it only says only seven more trees are coming down, that'll be 14 inches or more. It, the forest is kind of thin. Excuse me. The forest is kind of thin, and especially during the wintertime when all the leaves are down, it's just going to be that much worse for us. So, I was wondering if there was any plan to build a, some kind of a wall that would mitigate the light from spilling over into our neck of the woods? I'm not sure if there is. And the other thing I wanted to say was that it looks like the retaining wall to accommodate that particular looparound is in the buffer zone. So, my thought is, why do we have buffer zones if we're just going to nibble away at them piece by piece? And I guess that's it. Thank you. Happy New Year to both sides.
And to you too. Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald.
Hello, and thank you. Thank you for what you all do. My name is Bob Gay, 5 Miller Road, fourth-generation Beverly resident. My problem here isn't with your design or any of that. It's a higher-level question of what are we doing? Beverly, to me, has changed drastically since when I grew up. And to the two gentlemen that just spoke, this isn't a quantitative analysis, this is a qualitative analysis. I cannot go on 128 from Exit 45 or 47 from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I have to go backroads through Hamilton-Wentham to get anywhere down past the North Show Mall. Beverly, North Show Music Theater event, all those kinds of things are just going to add to what's already peak. So, I'm just here on record to say I'm disappointed with the continuing building and residential units. Now, I'm not saying the look and feel of this is bad. It looks great. Some of the other presentations earlier looked fantastic, too, but I'm just here going on record that as a resident, I wish we would stop continuing to build these residential units for all the reasons that we've just talked about. We don't have, Beverly's finite, right? Are we going to start taking away farms like Marine Farms down near the airport? So, those are my concerns. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak on this and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here in the room?
Evening. Bill Squibb, 509 Cabot Street. I likewise have lived here off and on all of my life and have seen a tremendous amount of changes in the city of Beverly. I was going to save this until the traffic meeting, but I just want to reiterate and commend Marcus Glenn for his comment. I think that an overpass is the only way that will solve the traffic problem. And I'm not talking about a great big interchange. All I'm suggesting is that you have a Exit 44 to Exit 44 overpass so that the 400 cars can go over and head in the direction toward Boston without having to go up and use the 1A interchange. The cars that are still using Conan Street can still get on and off there. Any cars coming up from Gloucester can go down to 62 and turn around. But the main thing is to get the cars from Trask Lane-Folly Hill over, heading toward Boston. I would assume that most of the people are going to be working in that direction. Some of them may go and work toward Gloucester. If they do, that's great. They're not a problem. But the Gloucester area and traffic coming up at 3:00 in the afternoon, which backs up from Rimble Ave to the mall, will still be able to go forward. I don't think they'll be going to this, the Trask Lane area. If they do, they can turn around at 62. But I think an overpass of some sort has to be looked at. And as I said before, I don't mean a large interchange. I just get together with the state and see if a single-lane overpass, just to allow the traffic coming out of the Trask Lane-Folly Hill area can exit onto 128, heading toward PBD onto Boston. The rest pretty much will take care of itself. And it's, they're both Exit 44. And the Trask Lane-Folly Hill is a double exit, as you, everyone is aware. The first one that you come upon is you can turn into the Trask area. The second one is a double exit. The first one, you can't exit onto 128 from, it's do not enter. So, the second exit, it is both ways, takes all the traffic from that area out onto 128. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squibb. Anyone else here in the room? Will we take a look at our attendees on Google Meet? What's the process on this? Can raise their hand? Please raise your hand if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment. Okay, and well, it looks like Andrea, you're the first one. If you could start with your full name and address, please, that would be great.
Okay. My name is Andrea.
Okay, Andrea. Sorry, I interrupted you.
Last name Belangia. 12 Walcott Road. I just have two quick questions. I would like to know the distance between the southern site, the southern building site, who actually, to the buffer zone on Walcott Road.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Taking a look at that. Miranda, do you know? Does someone on the team have a, does someone on the team have an answer here? Okay, we're looking at it right now.
Ellie, thank you.
We're guessing. I mean, we can also get back to the center from the next one.
Yeah, Ms. Belangia, this is going to be a guesstimate here.
It's in the order of 400 feet.
400 feet to the buffer zone?
To the edge of the property, then the 200-foot buffer zone is, I think it's...
So, 400 feet includes the buffer zone?
That's, is that right, Mr. Small?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I do have one more question, and I'm referring to the MIPA document that was submitted by Epsilon. And I'm, is that, it was submitted on July 2024. Is that a still in-date document, or is there an updated one?
That is the initial filing with MIPA, and there has been a subsequent filing dated December 16th that may, I don't know whether it's on the website yet.
It was supposed to be posted the 23rd, I believe. It should be there now. The public comment period for that closes on the 22nd, which is a week from today.
It's February 7th. Yes.
Okay. Well, I was just inquiring on that. On page 24 of the July 31st document, there's a reference to, as emergency vehicle access connection will be made through the Apple Village property, through the End of County Way Extension slash Cleveland Road, which will be usable for pedestrian and bicycle connections to Elliot Street. I just want to make sure that this is not going to be a segue into an alternate route into this project. I have been worked, I've been living on Walcott Road since 1983, and prior to me moving here, this project was submitted, and it was denied because of various reasons and traffic and they wanted to pave that road for an alternate entry. So, I was just inquiring, just actually, just to make sure that, like I said, that is not a segue to a paved alternate route other than 128 into that project.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, and we've actually stated in our application quite definitively that there will be no alternative access into the site. So, that, that existing emergency access is limited purely for emergency access. Pedestrian and, pedestrian and bicycle connections may be able to be made, but there, it is not intended to be a regular traffic route, nor could it be used by the applicant for that purpose.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, it looks like we're done with the public comment for tonight. Do board members have any other... Do board members have any other questions or I, George?
Could someone enlighten the class? What is the buffer zone? This is the first I've heard of a buffer zone.
No, it's the 200-foot barrier that goes around the site that's part of the RSD zoning district. Says that no structures can be constructed.
Between 200 feet of the edge of the...
Yeah, between from the property line to the, in 200 feet, it says no structures can be built on it. The applicant has actually suggested a condition that no buildings be placed there either.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we'll...
And also to further clarify, when we did the definitive subdivision for this, for the zoning freeze, we also put a condition in there saying that that, reiterate or reinforcing that buffer is still in existence.
Oh, I do remember that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we'll, we'll be waiting for our, our next meeting, February 12th, at which time you expect we'll be able to discuss traffic, parking?
I think that maybe, I'm not sure that we'll be able to discuss traffic yet. It will really depend on where we are with peer review. What I would suggest is that we can coordinate offline with Ken between now and then to, to determine what makes sense to present. You know, we want to keep it moving. We want to keep it moving for the board members and for members of the public who are coming out. We just don't want to present information that's not fully baked yet, so.
Okay. All right, I think that's fair. I'd accept a motion to continue this public hearing until our next meeting on February 12th. So moved by Mr. Gomes, seconded by Ms. Flannery. All those in favor? Opposed? It's six to nothing, so we'll see you on February 12th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the members of the public who took the chance to speak and participate tonight. Why don't we, as we wait for the mass exodus here, why don't we take a brief break, just say five minutes?
A move.
Second, okay. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, we'll adjourn for five minutes. Thank you very much, everyone, for letting us do our transition to the next public hearing and to, and we'll just continue right along. The next is a public hearing for special permit number 200-2418 Leather Lane. Paul Deutsch, is that how you pronounce it?
Dodge.
Dodge. Anne Marie Dodge applicants, and this is, the notice has to be read, so Ken, thank you.
Notice is hereby given under, that under the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9 and Sections 300-91, 300-94, and 300-18 of the Beverly zoning ordinance, the Beverly Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 15th, 2025, during a public meeting that begins at 7:00 PM at Beverly City Hall, 3rd floor Council Chambers, 191 Cabbage Street, Beverly MA 01915, relative to special permit number 200-24. A special permit is being requested for the creation of a pork chop-shaped lot and establish a new buildable lot on the premises for single-family use. The applicants are Paul B. Dodge and Anne Marie Dodge, 18 Leather Lane, Beverly, Massachusetts, 01915. The property is located at 18 Leather Lane in a R90 zoning district and is shown on Assessor's Map 63, Lot 30. The application and plans are on file at the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review.
Thank you very much. And Connor Walsh here to represent the applicants. So why don't we begin tonight? We have the, the documents up on the screen for folks to see. Actually, Ken, I don't know how you do it, Ken, but you always make it look easy. So, Mr. Walsh, if you could give us an overview?
Of course.
And then we'll dive in with questions and comments, et cetera?
Sure, yeah, thank you. So to reiterate for the record, Connor Walsh, Glofsky &amp; Glofsky offices located at 8 Washington Street here in Beverly. Here tonight on behalf of the applicants, Paul and Anne Marie Dodge, who are the owners of 18 Leather Lane. As stated, the applicants are requesting the approval of a special permit as to authorize the creation of a pork chop lot in order to divide the existing property and create a new lot to be used for single-family purposes in the future. Subject property is located in Beverly Farms, very close to the Manchester Line off of Hale Street, and consists of an approximately four and a half acre lot. It's presently approved with one single-family lot, uh, single-family home, excuse me, which was constructed by the applicants on or about 2019. The property is located in the R90 zoning district. Leather Lane is a small road, is approximately 10 single-family houses on it between Hale Street and the end of the, the end of the way. Relevant to this application, the minimum lot area in the R90 district is 90,000 square feet, and the minimum frontage requirement is 225 feet. So as you'll see on the plan, the applicant proposes to divide the existing lot to create a pork chop lot that would include their existing single-family home and a separate buildable lot in the northwest portion of the property. So we got this little dealie here now, I guess, and so each resulting lot will exceed the minimum requirement of 90,000 square feet. And Section 318 of the zoning ordinance establishes the criteria for a pork chop lot, which includes in addition to some of the more typical special permit requirements, some mathematical requirements to be met. Primarily, the lot area of the pork chop lot can't count the, for lack of a better term, the pork chop aspect of it in its square footage calculation. So as you'll see here, the Lot 2B, which is on the right, is in total roughly 105,000 square feet, but if you exclude the area, which is calculated from the point where you can create 225 feet of frontage parallel to the, the actual frontage of the lot, if you exclude that area, it brings us down to just over 90,000 square feet remaining compliant with the requirements of R90. Similarly, the minimum width at any point in the pork chop can be no less than 75 feet. The, I confirmed this with the engineer for the project prior to this, the, the shortest width is roughly 95 feet in that area. I'll note, the applicants have discussed this project with all their immediate surrounding neighbors in the area. Leather Lane is probably not familiar to many people, but there are, there's kind of like a, a bunching of single-family homes very close to Hale Street. Where we are here is pretty much at the end of Leather Lane, so as far away from Hale Street as you can be. So the property's, you know, right at the end of Leather Lane across the street, and then the two immediate abutters that would most be affected. The applicant has discussed this with them to no objection that we've heard. I'm sorry?
Which two residents are you referring to?
Yeah, I can show you, I actually have, if it would be helpful, this here, if you don't mind. That shows that certain, the, the properties in question. The applicant, the subject property is, is outlined in blue there, and then the, those neighbors that it was discussed with to no objection are, are shown here. I can spread it to...
Wayne, if you could distribute that on your side to take a look at?
Yeah, that's all the same, so that's, those can be...
So that would be looking at it off on...
Dealies in the, it's the dealies in the Putnam, Metcalf?
We have extras here.
And so the Putnam, so it's kind of an interesting property in the sense that a lot of these, the, the properties listed on Juniper Street are accessed off of that portion of Hale Street that essentially abuts with Haskell Street. So if you're coming from like 128 towards West Beach, the last left that you can take before you get to 127 is Juniper Street. So those are very large properties. The structures in question are nowhere near this lot. So those folks that it's been discussed with would be those shown on the plan as, you know, the nickel...
1915.
And then 12, and then I believe it's 10, which is the, the next property farther to the south.
Well, and then 10's not on this, is it?
Correct.
Correct and butter?
Yep. And so, I mean, other than that, you know, I know that, that some questions were raised from various departments that I'm happy to, to talk with the board about. I don't know whether it makes sense to address those in turn, or whether, you know, the board has kind of initial questions as to the, the substance of the application at this stage.
I think, well, let's see if members have any questions, and we'll go from there. I, I do know, actually, our chair, Ellen Hutchinson, is, is here, but she miraculously is, is having me continue to chair the meeting. So I'm going to take the prerogative of the person with the microphone and ask if you could, have you seen the memo that was written by city engineer Lisa Chandler?
Yes, I have.
That talks about five different points?
Yep.
Could you just bring us through each one of these points?
Sure.
And, you know, I, I mean, I can read them, these are, I'll read them one at a time, and then you can respond.
If, if that works, that's fine with me.
These are through, through me, these are questions from Lisa Chandler. It should be confirmed that the existing onsite soil absorption system, SAS, for 18 Leather Lane is not in violation of Title V setback requirements due to new property line. SAS is not shown on the plan.
That's because the property is serviced by sewer. And so the, the property in question actually owns the fee interest in the sewer line that services this property, as well as that property across the street at 15, which I believe engineering had provided as-built. My understanding in speaking with the applicant is the owners of that 15 property across the street that were subject to those as-built have not actually finalized the process of tying into the sewer system. Without going too far into detail, I think it's just a matter of they have a significant renovation going on in their house, but, yeah. So for purposes of that comment from engineering, the, the property is serviced by sewer.
Okay, and that ties into number two?
Real quick, just, just to clarify, so 18 Leather Lane is tied into the sewer line?
Correct.
15 Leather Lane is not?
It has, 15 Leather Lane has the right to.
Okay.
Whether or not they have finally is, is unclear to me, but, but yeah.
This also, that also confirms with what I spoke with, with Laura Delikai at the Health Department to ask if there's any kind of Title V for this property, and there is not. So it is, it's, because it's served by public show. So it is, it's, because it's served by public sewer, so that answers that question.
Right, and I'm happy, I have a plan in here that's of record on the registry of deeds that depicts the sewer line. If that would be helpful, I'm happy to, to submit that to the board as part of this conversation. The, I suppose that leads.
It leads to number two, which is, will Lot 2A be tied into sewer? Will the existing house at 18 Leather Lane, Lot 2B, be tied into the sewer? In 2017, there was a two-inch pressure sewer that had been privately installed in Leather Lane. Applicants should confirm ability to access sewer if planned.
The intention would be for 2A to tie in to, to that sewer line. As I said, the, the owner of the property, the applicant, owns the interest in the sewer line. And so at this stage, that would be the plan, unless obviously they haven't gone through the whole building permit process and logistics and site work and those sorts of things. If that were the case, I suppose there's always the possibility that they may pursue septic, if that's easier for whomever may ultimately construct a home on, on the resultant lot. But the sewer line is available and is owned by the applicants if, if that were to be something that were pursued.
Okay. Next, it should be noted, the closest hydrant is approximately 500 feet away, and there appears to be no adequate emergency vehicle turnaround.
Yeah, so that, I think, kind of goes hand in hand with the comments from Captain Krailing as to this, who stated that the fire department's apparatus are able to access Leather Lane, but due to, I believe it's essentially a lack of turnaround, that it would be required that whatever house were to be built would need to be sprinkled as, as fail-safe, which I've discussed with the applicant, they're perfectly comfortable with that and appreciate that that would be something that, that would be required in the future as it relates to a future property.
Captain Krailing also had a, a secondary comment, and that was regarding the, the fact that the, the department is working to implement a wildland urban interface program for properties such as this, so that the home built is prepared for wildfire exposure through setbacks, maintenance, and building design. And there's a request to please integrate up-to-date guidance on building in the WUI, Wildland Urban Interface, in the design and construction of any building built on the proposed lot.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would posit that that would be a conversation at the, the building permit, say, like, that strikes me as more of a building code issue more than anything, but certainly if that's something that the city is implementing and, and requiring would be something that would be addressed in the ultimate construction of that, of that house.
There will also need to be a subdivision created, because this is just granting a special permit to create the lot. There's no subdivision being created, no subdivision created with this as of yet.
So it would be an A&R in my experience as opposed to a subdivision, but yes, yeah, so this would have to, we'll, assuming that this were to pass, it would have, it would need to be followed with an A&R.
Yep.
So there'd be a, a secondary to talk about issues like that? Okay. And it appears the existing water line is undersized at 1.5 inches to add an additional service. Applicants should provide information on how the lot will receive water.
Sure, so I, I've spoken with the applicant and the engineer as to this issue. The engineer has not done a full analysis of the adequacy of water lines or anything at this stage in the potential project. That said, the water line in question, as I understand it, only services three properties, which being the subject property, the property directly across the street at 15, and then the, it's basically up the hill, it's hard to, it, it's not necessarily shown on the plan, but it's owned by the Nichols family, who also own the property directly across the street at 17, I believe, 19 Leather Lane. So essentially Leather Lane comes to a head, and there's a structure, there, there's a property kind of up on the hill at the end, that driveway more or less feeds into the road. Those are the three properties that are serviced by the existing water line. The water line does exist. My client, as part of their, construction of their house, were advised that the water pressure was such that they almost needed to put in a reduction system in providing the service to, to their house. So for purposes of, of this application, I guess my position would be that there is water there. Obviously, in order for a, a structure to ultimately be built, there would need to be confirmation as to the adequacy of that water. But again, I, I would think that that would be something that would be a, a building permit conversation, big picture.
That, as it relates to the pork chop, you know, lot itself and the property that's already on it, then this is not something that needs to be addressed at this time, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, I, I, obviously, one of the special permit criteria is that adequate utilities exist, which I suggest, by all accounts, from what we know now, there are adequate utilities to service the, the new structure. If that is ultimately found to not be the case, you know, realistically, my client is intending to remain at their existing home. There's no benefit to them to having it work out that then their water is impacted by overburdening the existing water line or anything to that effect. If perhaps, you know, a condition of approval be that their, you know, that adequacy of the water line for, for an additional home be confirmed by engineers or something to that effect, I, I, that may be a solution. But at this stage, having, the, the engineer in the project was the same engineer that handled the, the construction of the house, the site work for that, the driveway, and he suggested that he didn't run into any issues related to water when they did that, but given the turnaround from receipt of the engineering department's comments, we're not, we haven't been able to be in a position to say with certainty whether or not it is truly adequate, but by all accounts, from what I've heard, there's nothing to suggest that it's not. But, I mean, I can't rightfully speak to the normal size of water pipes or anything like that. I truthfully don't know what, what would be typical in one of these situations.
I think I need to review what our criteria are for evaluating this project. Like, it seems like we're discussing the viability of the project as a development site. Is that our purview? I'm not quite clear what, what it is we're supposed to look at.
Yeah, and granting the, the pork chop, do we need to have?
Yeah, we're reviewing it as if it's a site review, but it's not.
Yeah, it's, there, there's nine, there's nine findings that are, or 10 findings that need to be made in terms of, in terms of granting a special permit for a pork chop lot, and they're included in the staff report under background, it's numbers one through 10. Those are the pork chop lot findings. In addition to the findings that the standard sections for the, for granting a special permit, that's typical of every special permit, this, the additional six.
Thank you.
So those, some of those speak to, like Mr. Walsh was saying, the adequacy of utilities going to the site.
I guess to the water question as well, the majority of the improved properties on Leather Lane are serviced by well water. There's every indication that as like a worst-case scenario, there could likely be a well drilled on this property to provide service to, to the new structure.
It's not in a report or anything like that, but I, when I spoke with engineering about this issue, that was something they also had mentioned, that a well could be created.
And the, the final question or comment from engineering was that the site has extreme topography and that the engineering office would have concerns over the possibility of an adequate driveway being installed.
So my, the applicant did look into this at a very preliminary, in a very preliminary way with, with Hancock Associates, was the engineer on the project. On the understanding that this is a very preliminary, you know, thought, the engineer on the project did suggest that he thinks that he's found a viable location for a driveway, which would be at the extreme, I guess, northwest of the property. Yeah, right, right where that cursor is there. And the, the topography change on it is, you know, roughly, looks to be in the range of nine feet from like the bottom of the hill up to where a house could potentially be. And so they don't have any, you know, they haven't done full site work or anything as part of this application, but of course, access would be something that would need to be determined before any house were to be constructed anyways. So that's where, where they're at as it relates to the driveway, but it is something that's been considered and does appear to have a viable path forward.
Those were my major questions. I, I think it's, and, and in the staff report, Ken made a good note on this, I think, and that is to, prior to any vote here, is to look at each one of the different findings that we need to discuss, and then also the six points, and just talk through, if it needs to be brief, then that's fine, but to talk through the different points so that we have both a discussion on the record, but also a firm understanding in our minds on all these different points. So personally, I think that it, before we get to talking about this, the, the six.
Public hearing.
Pardon me?
It's still a public hearing, also, we should.
Oh, see if any, yeah, that's right, that's right. Do we have anyone in the room who's interested in addressing this? Do we have anyone online? Google meets? Anyone? Okay, so we'll come back to our discussion here. So, so I guess I'll just start it off. Let's go through the staff report here. Let's talk about whether or not the site is an appropriate location for the proposed use and the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. Does anyone have any thoughts? George?
I'll just throw it out there that I find it hard to believe that a single-family home on two acres of land is going to negatively impact virtually anybody.
I would concur. Well, especially, I, I'd say too, and this is not an overbuilt area, it's, sure, there were challenges, but at, at the same time, it doesn't seem to have affect. The neighbors, who are all made aware of our meeting tonight, don't, haven't, you know, come forward with any concerns, that, you know, all seems good from that aspect. Any, any other thoughts? It's also not that it really qualifies as an infill project, but anytime we look at being able to extend housing stock in a way that is minimal impact on neighbors, it's a good thing. No factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use? I personally don't see anything, yes, Ellen?
There's been no evidence presented during the course of this hearing to suggest that property values would be negatively impacted by this.
Microphone.
Oh, there we go.
Can you just turn it on for me?
Oh, thank you. I'll repeat, I believe there hasn't been any evidence presented during this public hearing tonight at all regarding property values, and certainly nothing, no evidence presented to suggest that property values would be negatively affected by this project.
Next, no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard or will result. I would say that, George, yeah?
I'll just refer back to my earlier comment about a single-family home on two acres of land. We're talking about one home.
With two or three cars? Yeah. Yes?
Mr. Beckwith, but to that point, the concern for the Lot 2A how they'll receive their water, that's the nuisance aspect that was part of that. People follow?
That the.
Not a nuisance, unreasonable hazard, and point A speaks to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The clarification of how Lot A will receive water. Just a concern, but we spoke to that earlier, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to reiterate.
Yep.
I suppose if it were to be to the point that accessing the existing water line created a nuisance, all indications suggest that a well would be available to be drilled in a manner that would likely alleviate any nuisance to the neighborhood or, or anybody surrounding.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes.
I'd also add that it strikes me that that statement of no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard looks at the impact of the project on external people or projects. So is it, in other words, is it a nuisance to the neighbors? Does it cause undue traffic such that it's a problem for the neighbors? So I agree with Ms. Flannery that the water is an issue, but it may, the water may fall into another finding, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yep, it would be, I, personally, I think it would be in and around appropriate facilities. Just the next point, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed uses. And so, and to the, the questions raised by the engineer about water line, but also the, the sewer line as well, but it sounds like they're, the owners have interest in the sewer line, access to the sewer line, so that doesn't seem to be an issue.
Yeah, and I, I guess beyond that, they have experience with this sewer line, where they just went through the whole process of the, again, this is not my, I'm not an engineer, but that, you know, the installation of grinder pumps and, and those sorts of things that are typically required for these kinds of long runs. So they just went through the process within the last five years. I'd imagine for any future buyer of this adjacent lot, they would be a valuable resource for seeing them through to the, the process of tying into the sewer if it were to be feasible, and if not, it's a very large property. I don't know anything about the perks or anything for septic, but I would suspect, you know, there's a small area of wetlands that's basically along the lot division line. I would suspect in those two acres, they'd probably be able to find a way to install a septic system in a manner that would provide adequate service as a worst-case scenario.
There are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact? Well, I, I think that we haven't heard any opposition by abutting property owners, so I think that basically speaks for itself. The minimum lot area of the pork chop shaped lot shall be at least the minimum lot area required in the zoning district in which the pork shop shaped lot is located, except the portion of the lot which is a narrow strip or portion of the lot to the way, should not be included in the lot area calculation. And it does meet both the size requirements and it not, does not include the stem of the pork chops.
Correct, yep. And that's measured basically from whichever point is parallel to the road at the first point that it reaches the minimum frontage, which in R90 is not an insignificant undertaking to get there, but the, it, it still reaches the 90,000 square feet when excluding that, that portion.
Number seven, the width of the pork chop shop like, shaped lot, measured at the shortest distance between side lot lines is no less than 75 feet at any point between the street and the existing or proposed building on the lot. Pork chop lots approved by the planning board previous to December 1984 with less than the required footage, but at least 20 feet of frontage shall be considered valid building lots for a period of 15 years from the date of adoption of this zoning amendment, September 5, 1991. On September 5, 2006, any pork chop lot approved by the planning board prior to December 1984, which is vacant or for which a. 1984 which is vacant or for which a valid building permit has not yet been issued shall lose its status as a grandfathered lot and be considered unbuildable. The width is 95 feet, it's just over, and, yes?
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, that the applicant has established that the width of the pork chop shaped lot measured at its shortest distance between the side lots is 95.08 feet, therefore meeting the requirement of the law.
All front, rear, and side yard setbacks shall be the same as the minimum setbacks specified for the zone in which the lot is located. And again, yes?
Once again, Your Honor, the applicant, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman.
That too, yeah. I just feel lighter too, right now.
I think that's how she wants to be addressed in the future, but that's.
I would say that the applicant has shown that all front, rear, and side setback requirements for the R-90 zone, he's, he has shown, the applicant has shown on his plan that they meet the requirements.
Number nine, the depth of that portion of the lot which fails to satisfy the lot frontage requirements set forth in the definition of frontage in.
Section.
Section, thank you, Ken. Of 300-5, between the street and the existing or proposed building on the lot cannot exceed a distance of 250 feet from the street. So, do you have an estimate as to what that is? It's not outlined on the plan?
Yeah, I mean, that generously would be 150 feet, yeah.
I didn't want to put an exact number, because I didn't want to like.
Right.
Put a decimal.
Yeah, that's, understanding it's not immediately clear on the plan to scale it.
You put a scale on it, and it's well under 250 feet, but I didn't want to say what the exact number is, because I couldn't get an exact number off of an engineering scale, but it's well under that number.
Okay. Number 10, there shall not be more than one other pork chop shaped lot with frontage contiguous to it.
Yeah, so in our review of everything, so the, this lot stems from, so the, the previous owner of this lot had owned a giant swath of land up here. This lot was created by A&R, together with a number of other surrounding lots. I've found no evidence of anything to suggest that any of the contiguous lots are pork chop. And if you look, you know, if you look at kind of the global, the way that the other lots are laid out, there's nothing that, that looks like it would even qualify if that had been the case.
I'm satisfied with that, but, so, and, is that it? The 10.
Ten for pork chop and then the street.
And, let's see, procedure, the, the different findings, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use and that the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. Pretty much talked about that, I think, in number one, yeah. That no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use, and we talked about that one already. That no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result, we talked about that as well. That adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use. I think we talked about the water and the sewer situation and the different options That there are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact. Again, we talked about that, and there aren't, that we've heard either directly to, ahead of time or during this public hearing, so, directly to us, I should say. That adequate and appropriate city services are or will be available for the proposed use. Of course, this is on a private lane. So, you're not requiring or looking or expecting any particular services?
No, no change in the current operation of the, of the way.
Okay, any other points? One last check online to see if anyone wants to weigh in before we close the hearing. That being said, I welcome a motion to close the hearing. Yes, George?
So moved.
Sir's second? Second by Ms. Flannery. All in favor? Opposed? The vote is seven to nothing to close the public hearing. Well, it's right here for us to make a determination. We have, what's the vote process on this? We have.
Make the findings for the.
The six findings?
Both, the findings for the pork chop as well as for a special permit, so it's the findings for the first 10, and then the separate findings for the special permit for six, and then a motion to approve, and if you want to add any conditions.
Okay, so, that being said, any discussion before we dive into this particular part? So can we do the findings for the, yeah, the findings for the pork chop and the special permit in one, or do we need to have them separate?
Separate.
Okay, that's, I'd welcome a motion with findings for consideration regarding pork chop.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Regarding special permit number 200-24, 18 Leather Lane, applicant Paul B. Dutch and Anne Marie Dutch make the following findings regarding a pork, the creation of a pork chop lot. One, that the site is an appropriate location for the proposed use and the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. Two, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use. Three, that no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result. Four, that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed uses. Five, that there are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact. Six, that the minimum lot area of the pork chop shaped lot shall be at least the minimum lot area required in the zoning district in which the pork chop, pork chop shaped lot is located, except the portion of the lot which is the narrow strip or portion of the lot to the way, should not be included in the lot area calculation. Seven, that the width of the pork chop shaped lot measured at the shortest distance between side lot lines is no less than 75 feet at any point between the street and the existing or proposed building on the lot. Pork chop lots approved by the planning board previous to December 1984 with less than the required frontage, but at least 20 feet of frontage shall be considered valid building lots for a period of 15 years from the date of adoption of the zoning amendment, 9/5/1991. On September 5, 2006, any pork chop lot approved by the planning board prior to December 1984 which is vacant or for which a valid building permit has not yet been issued, shall lose its status as a grandfathered lot and be considered unbuildable. Eight, that all front, rear, and side yard setbacks should be the same as the minimum setbacks specified for the zone in which the lot is located. Nine, that the depth of the portion of the lot which fails to satisfy the lot frontage requirement set forth in the definition of frontage in section 300-5 between the street and the existing or proposed building on the lot cannot exceed a distance of 250 feet from the street. And 10, that there shall be not more than one other pork chop shaped lot with frontage contiguous to it.
Sir's second? Ms. Flannery, seconds? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Seven to nothing. Those are our findings. I'd welcome another motion.
Mr. Chair, regarding special permit application number 200-24, 18 Leather Lane, applicant Paul B. Dutch and Anne Marie Dutch make the following findings regarding the special permit. One, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use and that the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. Two, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use. Three, that no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result. Four, that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use. Five, that there are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact. And six, that adequate and appropriate city services are or will be available for the proposed use.
Sir's second? Second by Ms. Flannery. All in favor? Opposed? Vote is seven to nothing in the affirmative. I'd welcome, want to bring it home?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, motion to grant special permit number 200-24, 18 Leather Lane, applicant Paul B. Dutch and Anne Marie Dutch.
Is there a second? Ms. Flannery, seconds?
Did we have some, any conditions?
There's a question.
So, we're in discussion time, we're in discussion time, right?
Yep.
So I think that we had, thinking about conditioning that there be water.
Existing water line be, shown to be adequate for an additional structure or something to that effect.
But at the same time, the question that I have is, we know that there's water up there, we know that there's sewer up there. Whether or not we need to do a special condition now, or whether or not with an A&R plan that comes before us.
Condition an A&R.
What?
You can't condition.
You can't condition, of course.
Would a building permit be granted for a site that has no water, though?
It would, there would definitely be a review, and it, from the, in, at a building permit stage, for whatever kind of water connection there was. If it's connected to that existing water line, I can imagine that it would be, engineering would flag it, because it's only on a one and a half inch line, that there would be, there would be some kind of review done or testing needed to be done on that water line at that time.
How about a condition that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the adequacy of water to the site be provided, because that way, worst-case scenario, if there is a well situation?
Yeah, I, I have objection to that, and if, as long as there's that alternative available, that if, you know, well were to be the, I don't even know if it's appropriate for me to be talking at this point, but, but yeah, that's if, I wouldn't oppose that. Obviously, there needs to be water to a house, so if that's, yeah, that's fine.
But saying what the solution is at this point in time is, is.
Correct.
Yes, we don't know what that is, so, yeah.
I think the only concern was that if tapping another service line off of a one and a half, one and a half inch would reduce the water pressure to the existing houses and create a nuisance for the, for the, for the existing homeowners, I think that was the concern.
So whether, whether it would be use of existing water line or the building of a well, that this, you know, testing the, I don't know, something along those lines, maybe?
I, that's why I was suggesting the adequacy, the adequacy, adequacy, I can speak, of water to the property be established, and that way they can establish it through multiple sort of different methods. That was kind of my thought there.
Yeah.
Was there a concern about the sprinklering request from the fire department?
Yes.
That, that should be.
That should be, that should be done now, if it's not, because those go to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be addressed now, since, again, since the subdivision will be an A&R, there's no conditioning or anything like that for an A&R.
Okay, happy to amend my motion to add the following conditions. One, that the adequacy of water supply to the site be established prior to the issuance of a building permit. And two, that per the November 25, 2024 letter from the fire department, Captain Krailing, that the building shall be required to be sprinkled with a minimum of NFPA 13D residential fire sprinkler system.
Question with the sewer?
Yeah.
A second, a minute.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Aye, or raise your hand. And opposed? No, no hands, so it's seven to nothing, approval.
Great, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
George, if you ever need a second position, you could be one of those guys who reads those announcements on TV. That was, that was, that was very impressive.
It was very impressive, especially since I struggled so much in doing it the first time, and I was, had no time constraints, so, anyway.
With, at the risk of digressing too much, we have a two-bedroom, or two-bedtime story policy in my family, and, you know, you gotta get through.
So, okay. So, I'd make a motion, I'd welcome a motion to conclude our public hearings and return to our regular meeting.
Second?
Second by Ms. Hutchinson, and all those in favor? Opposed? Seven to nothing, approval. So we're back into our meeting, the last.
And Gary Patch has his hand raised on Google Meet for, what was it, item number two on the agenda, I believe.
Item number two. So we'll come back to item number two on our agenda. Do you remember we, when we last left our heroes, we, we put that to the side since the release, the request for a release of performance guarantee for OSRD number 10-17 Hickory Hill Way, formerly known as 203040 Webster Avenue, Hickory, applicant Hickory LLC, has a request to release the performance guarantee for us. Yes, so, Mr. Patch, you have a, can you entertain us with your thoughts here?
Sure, sorry we weren't there earlier, weren't sure we needed to be there for this particular hearing. As we're just requesting that the board would release the final bond with the, as bill plan has been approved by engineering, conservation signed off last night, excuse me, and I, anything else I can provide to you, I'd be help, you know, happy to be at at this time. I'm not sure what we, what we would need to tell you at this point.
Well, basically, we like to have the applicant actually attend a, a hearing to answer any questions that might come up, and as a matter of course, it's a best practice approach, to make sure that, that we have on record, you know, your, your statements supporting the documents that you've submitted to us, that substantial compliance with the approved OSRD site and definitive subdivision plans has been reached, the final paving, curving, sidewalks, grass plot, et cetera, et cetera, have all been installed, and basically the work's done.
Yes, it has been done. When we asked engineering to do inspections, they referred back to Griffin Engineering, which did all the inspections and confirmed that the work was done according to the plan. If you prefer, we could extend this to next month and make sure someone's there in person, that would be a better situation.
Now, this is a hybrid meeting, so you're more than, within your rights to join and participate through Google Meet. Are there any other questions from, yes, Ms. Hutchinson?
Did we hear from Lisa Chandler as to whether or not we can release the bond?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They received the as-built, and she reviewed.
She's happy with everything?
Said, everything looks good.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicants? I'd welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, motion to release the performance guarantee for OSRD number 10-17 Hickory Hill Way, formerly known as 203040 Webster Avenue, applicant Hickory Hill LLC.
Sir's second? Second by Ms. Flannery. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? The vote is seven to nothing in the affirmative. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Mr. Patch.
Thank you.
Mr. Patch, Mr. Patch, I have to get the Form H that is in front of me, given to me by Bob Griffin, I have to get the chair to have it notarized, and I'll get it back to you.
Very good, thank you very much. A good evening.
Okay, our final piece of business tonight is minutes. We have two sets of minutes before us, and, as I, as I reach over, and have members had an opportunity to review them. We have minutes for June 18. We have minutes for June 18th, 2024, and December 17th, 2024. I know, Ms. Flannery, you, you looked over and you had a few...
I had noted scripters on... On the June 18th minute, I've noted scripters errors. And the one point of clarification, Mr. Clausen?
Mm-hmm.
On page five, point number four, trash totes are a reasonable alternative and they create more space for parking totes.
I should say parking spaces.
Thank you, that was my, that was the one, I did not notice the scripters.
Okay, so for parking, so that's...
Totes should be...
Totes as being...
Spaces.
That totes, that tote should be limited, should say more space for parking, period.
For parking.
Yeah.
Parking, period?
Just parking.
Okay. And also, oh, yeah, and the rest are all scripters as noted.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Kind of hurt that the minutes I did are like some red things, I don't know.
Okay, any other, any other edits to the June 18th, is it 18th meeting? Yeah, minutes? Okay, I'd welcome a motion.
I move to approve the June 18th minutes for the Beverly Planning Board as amended.
A second?
Seconded by Mr. Gomes. All in favor? Opposed?
No.
Approved, seven to nothing. And finally, December 17th minutes. And again, Ms. Flannery adds some small scribner errors that she has passed along, caught, and also looks like...
I noted, there's a couple of notations, Mr. Clausen?
Mm-hmm.
On page seven, the language for the motion. Line number 298. On page 10, the date of the, on line 440, the date is June 7th, 2025.
Yeah.
And on page 11, line 459, the meeting minutes were for the July 16th, 2024 meeting.
Yep.
Others were scripters.
Does anyone else have any other amendments? I'd welcome a motion.
I move to approve the minutes for the December 17th Planning Board meeting as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Gomes. All those in favor? Opposed? Approved, seven to nothing. And ladies and gentlemen, I think that brings us to the end of the meeting.
Mr. Clausen, have any new business for us?
Is there, pardon me, any, anything?
Not particularly, other than the state Supreme Court basically upheld the 3A, except that the EUHLC has to re-promulgate or whatever, get the regulations and guidelines adopted correctly, and we got a copy of those in the emergency regulations today, I looked them over, and they are the same. We are, so we are still set. The only thing, the, the big change is there, it gives the 28 communities that have not complied a chance to comply by July 14th. Yeah.
One more stretch.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, well, if we're, if we're done, I'd welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Seconded, okay. In favor?
It's the people who want to leave.
Yep, and seven to nothing, we're adjourned, thank you very much.